We can be in the regular meeting of Lompoc City Council Tuesday, July 20th, 2021. Anything to report from closed session, Mr. Malave? Oh, sorry, we need to do roll call, sorry. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here, we're here, I can see all of you, we're so close together once again. Reportable action from closed session, please.
Yes, Mayor, City Council met to discuss the two items on the closed session agenda, one real property negotiations and one labor negotiations. Council gave direction to staff on both those items, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. I invite Pastor Joey Price forward for the invocation and then we'll remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
O Holy One, I pray this evening for all of the citizens of our beautiful community. I pray for our leaders, the first responders, for those who struggle to make ends meet, for those who are dealing with illness, and those who are grieving. I pray for those who seek employment and for those who approach retirement. I pray for those who seek justice and for those who commit crimes. I pray for victims of violence and for our children who are so innocent and for all those whose work is invisible to us. Holy One, I thank you for all those that I call my fellow Lompokians, for no matter what they might be facing in life, we can face it together and find the best in all of us. As the COVID pandemic continues to rage in our world, we turn to you as our healer. We are constantly surrounded by challenges that keep us off balance. Tonight, we pray that all people will seek cooperation and community. Bless us with your wisdom and strength. Help us, your creation, to be kind to one another and focused on what is truly important, our relationships with each other, our world, and you. Send us forth into this world equipped with your love, that others might come to know you and your compassion. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Just a reminder to our public, Channel 23 on Comcast, as well as the radio station K-Peg 100.9 streams our meetings, and you can also go to cityoflompoc.com and click City Council button and view City Council meetings to watch it. You are welcome to attend in person and you may also call in for oral comments at 805-875-8201. Written communications may be submitted to s_haddon, H-A-D-D-O-N, at ci.lompoc.ca.us no later than 4:00 PM on the Tuesdays of council meeting. City manager report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For tonight, I've actually asked our police department, who will be Captain Martin tonight, to do just an update on where we are in our hiring and everything else that's going on more or less in the police department, so we can get an update on that one.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to come forward. Chief's on vacation, otherwise I'm sure he'd be here happily telling you what we have to share. So when the chief and I took over about two and a half years ago, our dispatch center was three full-time dispatchers. We are supposed to have a supervisor and eight dispatchers. I can happily tell you today that's finally come to fruition. We have, our last dispatcher has been offered a job and is going through the process and we hope to have them working here real soon. So we're full in dispatch, we're fully staffed in records, we have one open jail position, which has three candidates currently in background for, and now police officers. So in this budget, we were authorized 48 police officer positions. When you break it down, we currently have 26 assigned to patrol. We have eight detectives, five are what we call traditional station detectives, and three who have been assigned to the Special Investigations Unit, which went active this past Saturday. This week is really administrative, getting things worked out and getting them with their schedule shifts that they're going to work, and they'll be full speed ahead as of next week. We have four in administration, including the chief and I, and three currently in the police academy, which started yesterday. Now, the police academy is six months long, and then they have a 21-week FTO program, Field Training Officer Program, they'll have to participate in once they graduate the academy. We have two in a field training officer program right now. We had a former dispatcher that had left the department, her husband's in the military, while she was away in North Dakota, she became a police officer. Well, he was reassigned to Vandenberg, and we were lucky enough to hire her back, and she is a police officer going through our field training program right now. And our recent graduate from the academy is in full speed ahead in the FTO program. We currently have one new hire who's going to start on August 2nd. We were trying to get him hired and into the academy, we just couldn't get it all done in time, so he is scheduled to take the, start the academy in January of next year. We're going to pick him up, we're going to get him used to the department, familiar with everything, and make sure he is prepared as he can be to start the academy, being successful in that. And then we have currently one officer that is injured on duty. So that comes up to 44 police officers out of our 48 that were authorized. What I ask everyone to keep in mind is that that is our total number, those are positions that are funded that we can hire for, but we currently only have 37 deployable. Because of the three in the academy, two on FTO, one waiting for the academy next January, and the one injured on duty, we can deploy if a major incident went down, 37 police officers in the community. So I want to recognize Human Resources for all the work and support that they've done to get us to where we are today. If it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be here. The chief and I are very excited, we haven't been able to see these numbers since we took over, but we're excited with what the future has and what we're going to be able to do for this community moving forward. Any questions?
Councilmember Cordova. Captain, if you could tell us a little bit about, there was a headline that said that Lompoc was launching a special investigations unit, talk to us a little bit about that so that the community knows.
So, special investigation unit, so as everyone is aware of the crime that we're having and the trend that we have right now with the gang violence, the chief and I didn't want, because our department is limited with its resources, to say this is just a gang unit. So what we've come up with is a special investigations unit. So whatever is trending in our community as far as a crime problem, these detectives are going to address that problem. Obviously, we know we have the violent problem that we're dealing with right now, so their primary focus until it is resolved is going to be the gang problem. And they're going to work with all of our partner agencies, parole, FBI, whoever we have to use to support us to see that through and make a change in the community when it comes to those violent crimes. That is their primary function right now. So as of next Tuesday, once all the administrative work is done, they will be full speed ahead in the community, addressing those issues. Now, once we have dealt with that, and I'm confident we will make a huge dent in that problem, we will then reassign them to do a different task. Stolen vehicles are a problem in our community, so we'll assign them to deal with stolen vehicles, and that's why we're calling it a special investigation, they're not just one thing, they're going to deal with those problems in the community.
Councilmember Ball.
Thank you, Captain Martin, for that update. I look forward to talking to the chief too and getting some of that, his vision for community policing and some of those things in the future, which I know is important to you guys. One thing I wanted you to elaborate on that wasn't mentioned, that still frustrates a lot of citizens, is the traffic issues, the speeding and pedestrians getting run over once in a while, et cetera. Is there a focus on addressing traffic, speeding, racing, some of those things?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, I explained to you that we have two officers in FTO right now. We were able to launch the special investigations unit because of our staffing increasing. So, we can only pull those three officers from patrol to get that unit going right now. When these two officers graduate the FTO program, it is my intent to deploy our motor officer back out full-time as a motor officer, and Officer Calderon back out as our homeless liaison officer. And that is, really, we're talking about 18 to 20 weeks, and then we'll be able to do that as well.
Thank you for that.
And thank you for mentioning the homeless liaison. I know that when he was active and be able to be proactive, we were able to help and assist many in our community and reduce its impact, and so I'm happy to hear we're moving close to being able to reinstate that.
We're excited.
Please also thank all of the officers that worked all the overtime that they have this past two and a half years. I know it's been extremely stressful on them, given the past year of pandemic adding to those stresses and to their families. We thank you for your support, because we know how often they weren't at home. And it's a difficult job, and it's hard to recruit in normal times, but this past two years has been really hard, and we just want to make sure that our officers that have stuck with us are appreciated and know they're appreciated. And then secondly, welcome to all our new officers, we're excited to have you join our community and hope this is an ongoing relationship and that this becomes your home.
Thank you, I'll pass it on, and just to let you know, we are testing again on July 30th, so we're still pushing forward to make sure that we have those numbers up.
So that application period is still open to anyone in the public who's looking, or has that closed?
Still open, they can go to the website and log in and then make their applications. There'll be a written test at nine in the morning at Hancock College, and then they'll get a lunch break, and then they'll come back at 1:30 and do the physical agility test.
Great, so there's another opportunity, if you're looking to get involved with local law enforcement, we invite you to apply and participate. Thank you, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else from the city manager?
No, that was the highlight for tonight. I thought it was really good, the information we've been getting, and again, we have some other prospects, hopefully, we're hoping to be fully staffed here for the first time in quite some time in the near future.
Thank you. We will now go to consent calendar. We'll open the floor for public comment on consent calendar, you have three minutes. The number to call is 805-875-8201, or you may come to the podium and speak. Did we have any written communication on the consent calendar?
Yes, ma'am, we received something via email from Mr. Ron Fink, it was delivered to council, to staff, provided in the lobby and placed on our website.
Thank you for that. While we make sure we've given enough time for the phone call, I'll go ahead and read what consent calendar is.
Mayor?
Yes.
I actually need to make a statement before we start the consent calendar, so...
Great, go ahead, yeah.
May I do that first? Okay. This is a requirement of the Brown Act. Item number five is an amendment of the city manager's contract with respect to compensation. It would provide a 2% salary increase equivalent to the increase recently approved for the city's other managerial and supervisory employees, and the recommendation is to adopt that item number five.
Thank you for that. So consent calendar is considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one rise and seeing no phone calls come in, I will ask council if there's any items of question or to pull. Councilmember Starbuck.
Don't wish to pull, but I have a question on item three and item six, just very simple. The adoption of this resolution 644121, tentative agreement with employees represented by the LPOA, what is our funding source for that? We've approved the budget, it says in here now we're going to make budget adjustments. Where is the money coming from?
When we passed the budget, we had a surplus of 1.3 million, and I think we had some Strauss money come in since then as well, so a little positives. We knew that we were going to have some negotiation issues here that we were going to address. This is becoming out of general fund, out of that balance reserve.
So the 1.3 million, approximately 500,000 is going to go to fund this raise?
Yeah, and that's all general fund, so, yeah.
General fund, so, just keeping track of what we're going to have left for the reserves. Thank you, Mr. Albro. The other was annual compliance, contract compliance, you should know, I'm very curious about this, this is a huge issue, was a huge issue a few years ago, and I thought it was worthy of a question on consent, that, is everybody in compliance?
We have some owner occupied homes that we just need verification of insurance per their loan agreement, and then we have one loan that is delinquent, but it's due to COVID, so we're working with them, and one economic development loan that needed to have six low-income employees, that they weren't able to do it because of having to close their business, so we're not going to ding them on that. But we're giving them until January for all of them to be compliant, and we'll be submitting our final report then.
I appreciate it, I don't want this one to become so routine that we don't pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Vega.
I do have a question on item number seven. That's okay for staff.
Yep.
The donation of real property, there has been a question on how we accept real property from people who want to donate, and are there any restrictions on this piece of property? Should the city or this thing get adopted, that we accept this donation? There's many things that are tied to donations, and I'd like the public to be clear on the fact that when there's a, something that's donated toward parks, are there any other restrictions, or can the park, can the city readily sell this property once, someday, without any other strings attached?
Thank you, Councilmember Vega, yes, that's, there is, there are no strings attached. Mrs. Cox is donating it in the memory of her husband, and it's the, actually, for those, you know, the 123 North H Street is where the last of the Titans mural was, it's right behind that little shopping center that has the bar and the old tattoo shop there, next to Stillman's. No, there's no restrictions to it, she was very kind and wished the city to have that.
You know, I have one more question, there was a publicly comment written as far as to any kind of contamination when the city accepts property. In this case, the question needs to be asked, since it's a commercial piece of property, is a phase one test required, or it's not required, is that something if the city was to disposition, it would be part of something in the future?
It's not required, and I'm going to ask Jeff to jump in if I say it incorrectly, it's not required, looking at what that site was, it originally was a building, it was used for different purposes, it wasn't not used for auto repair, paint shop, solvents of any kind, so any kind of risk on that would be very, very low on the sense of having any environmental issues. And then if you look at the cost of an environmental, level one is it?
Phase one.
Phase one analysis, you're looking at 10,000 or more dollars to do that, which is not quite the, you know, it's a little less than the cost of that property on the valuation, but we didn't see at that time anything that would raise an issue. If it had been on a corner that could have been a gas station at some point or something like that, we definitely would have done an environmental study before accepting anything, but this one, having been, since it had been built essentially, was just an office-type building.
Thank you, not the cloud, the waters, but in my experience, you know, the reason I'm asking, just for transparency to the public, usually it's not the exact APN that's the issue sometimes, it's something across the street, something adjoining. The lot that's at the end of the Lompoc Theater was a gas station once upon a time, there is a lot that was called Soda Pops, which is on the backside of I Street, which was used for auto repair, and I just want to make sure the city's not stuck once upon a time, because I have seen where if there's a school maintenance yard across the street, there has been contamination in other properties that just bleeds across the street and it comes under the road, and even though there wasn't, there wasn't anything contamination related on that parcel, it has seeped through, you know, so I just want to make sure that we're clear that, on our understanding of it.
And I did have discussions with our city attorney, in fact, I'm going to ask him to make any kind of statement on that.
Well, I really couldn't have said it better than the city manager did, but I think we, as staff, we just still feel like the chances of any kind of contamination are very minimal, and the cost of the phase one is a substantial portion of the value of the property itself.
Yeah, and just for clarification, maybe you could, Jeff, just clarify what a phase one test would be as far as contamination and why people do this normally on a, on a commercial piece of property.
A phase one is just an analysis that's done by an environmental scientist or environmental consultant to do like a rough first look to see if there are any environmental contamination issues on the site. And the reason that you may want to get that done is because if a site is contaminated, then an owner can be liable for the contamination, regardless of whether they had anything to do with causing the contamination, just by virtue of owning it, you can be liable.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification, and just for the public, you know, phase one, if you get a phase one clearance, that means there is zero contamination, if you go to phase two, that means there was contamination, so, thank you.
All right, is that all the questions we have regarding consent calendar? All right, I will entertain a motion for consent calendar.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, and I need a second.
I'll second.
And we have a second, any questions? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. We have seven minutes before we have five minutes on that clock before we have the requirement to move to public hearing. So we will start the oral communications and interrupt it to go to the districting hearing at 7:00 PM. So, if you would like to speak on general items regarding city matters, you may come to the microphone, or you may call 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. To facilitate city department's ability to receive monetary donations, the council moved to establish a foundation. A need was identified to benefit government workers, and the council took decisive action. However, are citizen needs being met? At this podium, we've heard concerns that a youth organization missed out on their annual fireworks participation sales, but I later was surprised to see that city employees did have a fireworks stand. Over the several meetings, we learned about the city's grease trap scam perpetuated on sandwich shops. At countless meetings, citizens and coaches expressed concerns about the poor condition of Lompoc parks and tennis courts. At several meetings, citizens have lamented the lack of recreational options for youth. At numerous meetings, citizens have complained about the neglected condition of streets, medians, and city office landscaping. For years, council has educated citizens regarding the need for additional revenue to fund city pensions, raises, and for additional staff. Time and again, citizens have supported increased taxation to cover rising government costs. For years, citizens have informed the council of the need for more affordable housing and a bigger footprint for the city. For years, citizens have requested council relax zoning rules and permitting to lure businesses to Lompoc, particularly research and space-related entrepreneurs. Where's the action on behalf of citizens' requests and concerns? Is city government a closed loop? Are we slaves whose only purpose is to serve you?
Thank you. Again, the number to call is 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. Seeing no one call in, we will close oral communications, and rather than go to appointments, I suggest we take a very short break while we wait for the seven o'clock to roll around. So if anyone needs a two-minute break, you have it. All right, we will reconvene and start our public hearing of 7:00 PM regarding the public hearing to receive input from the community regarding the district-based election maps for redistricting process after the 2020 census. And I will hand it back over to our city clerk.
Janelle Phillips from DMC will give us, I'm sorry, NDC, will give us the presentation this evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Good to be with you again, and this, tonight will be the second of the four required public hearings regarding district elections, so thank you, Mayor and Council, for hearing my presentation tonight. So, this is going to be very similar to the first presentation I gave a couple weeks back, but there will hopefully be, if the technology works for me, I'll be able to show you some of the mapping tools as well. So just a reminder, as far as the redistricting process and what the timeline looks like, so we had our first public hearing on July 6th, and the second is tonight on the 20th, and that will be our last pre-draft public hearing. Then we will be waiting for the census data to come in, and then once that is, and we can draw official draft maps that we can then consider in the new year, in February, the 2nd and 16th specifically, and then we're hoping to have a final map adoption via second reading of the ordinance on March 1st. As a reminder of the criteria we had to follow, we have federal laws that are preeminent, which include equal population, roughly equal population in each of the districts, following the Federal Voting Rights Act by not diluting the voting power of protected class citizens, but on the flip side... but on the flip side, not practicing racial gerrymandering where you make race or ethnicity the paramount consideration. Once you make sure to follow the federal laws, then you turn to the state laws, which are rank order of criteria. The first being that the district should be contiguous or one-piece. The second being that you should keep neighborhoods and communities of interest undivided. The third being that you should try to follow easily identifiable boundaries like major roads and railroads, et cetera. The fourth being that the district should be compact by not bypassing one group of people to get to a more distant group. And then you have this prohibition at the end where you're not supposed to favor or discriminate against a political party. And then once you are certain that you have followed the state criteria, then you can consider other traditional districting principles such as minimizing voters shifted to different election years, respecting voters' choices by avoiding pairing off council members, incumbent council members in one district, looking at future population growth and accounting for that to an extent, and preserving the core of existing districts. So when it comes to keeping neighborhoods undivided, the first question we want to ask is what is your neighborhood? And the second is what are its geographic boundaries? And here are some examples of physical features that might define a neighborhood boundary. And so we can talk about it as what the boundaries might look like, or if it's focused around a certain landmark or area. And in the absence of public testimony, we hope to get public testimony, but if we don't get it, we can look at planning records and other similar documents that might help us figure out where the neighborhoods are and so that we can try to keep them together. But looking beyond neighborhoods, we have this further term called communities of interest, which are also geographic areas, but they revolve around a certain shared issue or characteristic that is usually socioeconomic one that might be impacted by city policies. And so the first question we want to ask is what defines your community? And the second is would this community benefit from being included within a single district for purposes of its effective and fair representation? And you'll notice the quote marks there because that is taken directly from the Fair Maps Act. And so the only, it's only considered a community of interest if it can answer yes to that second question. So if there might be communities of interest that might benefit more from having multiple representatives on the council, but if it would benefit from having just one, then you should try to keep it together. But definitions of communities of interest may not include relationships with political parties, incumbents, or political candidates. This is the demographic summary of your existing districts excluding about 3,000 in the prison. And you can see that there are some districts that are, by our current estimates, again, we don't have official data yet, but by our current estimates, we believe are overpopulated and underpopulated. Specifically, three is overpopulated and four is underpopulated, and one and two to lesser extents. And so we, the goal is to try to have a total percent deviation less than 10%. So right now, it's exactly 10%. And so we want to try to get it to closer to 5% if possible, but definitely less than 10%. You'll also see that citizen voting age population is displayed on the table because that is what the courts have decided is the most important data to consider when you're looking at following the Federal Voting Rights Act. And so you can see which of the current districts have greater percentages of certain race or ethnic groups as measured by the citizen voting age population. So these estimates are, like I said, unofficial, but we're hoping that once the official census data comes in, it will be very close. And if you make any maps beforehand, hopefully they'll only require a little tinkering and won't be too far off. Each of the four districts must contain about 10,100 people. Again, if we assume that we're excluding the prison population. I do want to point out, there's a link here to Story Map. And if I click on that, I might have to close out of this presentation here. If you click on that link, it will take you to this webpage that will provide you maps showing the different demographic information. And the first, it might be hard to see on the screen, and I, do we have all the lights off, or, okay. So it will show it better on your computer screen, hopefully, than it does here, but if you look at, these are different racial or ethnic groups as measured by their citizen voting age population. So you can click on these to see where there are, oh, that's interesting. So I think there might be an issue with your projector because the colors, there's, it only shows the purple color. And it's, if you were looking at my computer screen now, you'd be able to see that there are reds and yellows that show greater percentages of Latinos. So it only shows the lowest percentage of Latinos by citizen voting age population. So I apologize for that, but if you were to go to the district elections website, you will see under mapping tools. And again, this website is cityoflamppoke.com, and it's under the city clerk and election official. And if you go to that webpage, you'll see under mapping tools that there are, this is where you'll find the Story Map. And if you click on that link, and if you're looking at your own laptop, hopefully you'll be able to see all the colors in their full glory. But to summarize for you, the Latino population is concentrated in this, is there a laser pointer?
And just for the public's knowledge, the colors are so pale that they aren't showing up. So on the site, they actually do show up. They're just really pale pink and blue, and they get washed out with our projector, so.
And for Mayor and Council, we are, that's on our list to replace to get a new one. So just so you know, it's in the new budget. We're working on it.
That's awesome to hear.
Going to try using the laser pointer to point out for you, members of the public who may not be able to see this on their own laptop screens. The highest percentages of Latino citizen voting age population straddles the District Two and District Four in this section of the city. And then there's another concentration in the top portion of District Three. And there's a third, slightly smaller one over the west side of District Two. So just for your information, where those concentrations of protected class voters are located, following the Federal Voting Rights Act, would, it's important to not dilute the vote of those communities and try to keep them together. Asian Black communities are very small in lamppost, and there are no significant concentrations of those groups. If you go down here, you'll can see other demographics of interest, and we have the same issue, only the purple's showing up. But if you look at your own computer screen, you'll be able to click on each of these buttons, and it will show you a different demographic piece, and you can see where different demographics might concentrate. But I can summarize by saying that there is a theme of a inner-city population around here, where they tend to be lower in the context of education, lower in the context of income, and higher in the context of speaking Spanish at home and living in rent or housing. If you scroll down here, you will be taken to a screen called population units. And this is referring to the population units that you'll find on the paper mapping tools. And you can see, it's just another way to access that information. And you can look at the actual ID numbers, which are for the Excel supplement, and then there's population unit counts as well. And finally, this section has various local data, including zoning areas. That's showing up a little better. So you can see that you have a single-family residential, which tend to be on the outer areas of town, and multifamily residential is more in the inner part of town. And then you have the commercial corridors along the main roads. And then you can check out airport data as well. School attendance areas may be communities of interest that are meaningful to residents. So you can see here that the high school and middle school attendance areas are displayed, as well as the elementary school attendance areas. So that is the Story Map. And now I'll go back to my presentation. And so the Story Map is one of just many mapping tools that are at your disposal. So that, the Story Map is more about learning about your community and kind of figuring out what the communities of interest and neighborhoods might look like. And then the, there's an interactive review map that is a supplement to that where you can actually go and look at the data yourself and check and uncheck what data layers you want to display. Then you have paper and Excel-based simple draw draft map tools. So I talked about this during my last meeting with you, where you had these paper maps that we've made available. One is supposed to be used with Excel, and that is when, that's the one that has the ID numbers from 1 to 71. In fact, if you go to that election website, and you click on Paper Maps, English, that will show you the most basic tool, which has the population counts. And you can use this to manually add up the populations to see if you can, you can draw your own districts and make sure they're equal in population. But if you want to use the Excel version, you would click on supplemental here, and that will take you to this version, which has the ID numbers 1 to 71. And you will then use that with the Excel spreadsheet. And if you click on that and download the spreadsheet, it will take you to this screen that shows you the instructions. But if you go to the assignments tab down here, you'll see that all of the population units are numbered from 1 to 71. And you can let Excel do the math for you by just entering a number of the district you want to assign to that population unit, 1, 2, 3, or 4. And then these numbers up here will tell you, let me see if I can zoom in so it's clearer. These numbers up here will tell you how close you are to the ideal population of roughly 10,100. So if you enable editing, and then let's say just randomly I'm assigning these to 1, you see up here District 1 is growing in population and getting closer to that ideal. And once you get close to that ideal, then you can stop and start assigning units to a new district. And then if you go to the results tab, you will see that it shows you what all the districts you create look like as far as their demographics and what their populations are. So lastly, I want to end our, end my presentation by asking the council and members of the public, what are the neighborhoods in the city and what are their boundaries? What other notable areas are in the city and what are their boundaries? I am here also to take any questions about the mapping tools. And we would also like to encourage council discussion and even action on a list of areas that might meet the AB 849 or the Fair Maps Act definition of neighborhoods or communities of interest that should be kept together in this process. So if you are aware of any neighborhoods or communities of interest, we would like to know so that we can make sure that they're kept together to the extent possible. So thank you for your time and attention, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. Any questions for our consultant or staff? Councilmember Starbuck.
Are these numbers that you have available based on the current census and the demographics for the city? Or are these old numbers from the prior census?
That's a very good question. So these are our best estimates of what the population in lamppost was in 2020. So we have come up with those estimates by taking a 2010 as a base population. And then we use what's called the American Community Survey, which is something the census also puts out. And we use that to estimate the growth that has taken place in the city over the 10 years. And then we reallocate those to the different smaller areas of the city to make sure that we have our best guess of what the population was in 2020, so.
How do you configure the demographics, then?
The demographics of.
Communities of interest, neighborhoods of interest. How are you guessing that, then?
So these are based on actual data that the census puts out. So it's.
We have that data, then?
Yes, so this estimated total population is something that we, as our company, NDC, have come up with using what the census provides. So we have to use a methodology to get at our best estimate because we don't have the official data. So this is the best we can do at the time.
So what you're asking is the public to kind of make up something that they think is going to fall in line with what your company is thinking is going to be the true data?
Yeah, we're very, we're very confident in these numbers, and we are hopeful that they will be very close to the 2020 actual official numbers. And if members of the public want to draw maps or give input before that official data is in, we're pretty confident that only some minor tinkering might be necessary.
When do we expect the official data, then?
So the census date is going to release this data August 16th.
Okay.
But however, the state of California has to take what the census puts out, and then they go through their own four-to-six-week data refining process where they reallocate prisoner populations to their last known residential address. And so it'll probably be late September, early October until we have data that we can use legally.
So basically, we're going to have three or four months to cram some maps together real fast that are going to be truthful and accurate.
Yeah, yeah, so you, we have until February.
Right.
Yeah.
But if we're starting September. I guess my last question is, what do you estimate our growth in the city has been from 2010 to 2020? What is our percentage of growth? How much did lamppost grow?
Oh, that's a good question. So let me, let me pull up. It's not showing up here. Well, what we have here is 40,571 that we estimate lived in lamppost in 2020. So let's just compare that to what the census reported for lamppost in 2010, which is 42,434. So just about, according to this, according to our estimate. So just about, according to this, according to our estimates, there's a little bit, see, I think what the census, it's tricky because what the census reported in 2010 probably includes the prisoner population. So I, I can't tell you exactly, my estimate is it's probably pretty flat.
I was going to say plus or minus 2% if anything, then. So we've had literally no growth and possibly negative growth.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So based on the second slide, that's why we have such a long window for providing opportunities to submit draft maps, and why we have two hearings on potential draft maps before we have to decide on one, right? Is because we're not getting this information until much later than expected.
Yeah, so the purpose of these two pre-draft map hearings is to really especially get input on neighborhoods and communities of interest because we can, we don't really need accurate population data to, to know what the neighborhoods that are meaningful to people are. And we, we can take that information now and have it available to us when the data comes in. And so when we're drawing our maps with those population numbers, we can make sure we're respecting those neighborhoods and communities.
Thank you for that additional explanation. Councilmember Vega.
Hypothetically, you know, if, if the public had no input on the maps, how would the maps come out from, from you guys? Okay, as far as the maps? Let's just say we went up to an Excel sheet because the, the program's already there to create the districts. We already have districts created, but in the essence of, let's just say we had no public input into the districts, would it be computer-generated? The choices, the choices for districts? Or would we use the, the current districts to come up as long as, say, the percentages were about the same because it seems like we have negative growth?
Yeah, so I, I, I don't, I think it's flat growth because what I reported in 2010 included the prison, I'm pretty sure. So it's probably flat growth. And so if we, if we don't get any input from the public, then we would hopefully get input from you yourselves, the council. And then we would, you can't really computer-generate these districts using an algorithm or something like that because there's a lot of criteria you had to follow in a certain rank order, and it, it takes, it takes some human brain power to come up with these districts. But we'll, we'll try to, we'll try to come up with several mapping options that are kind of different. So give you different options to consider. We could have one option that's very close or maybe identical to what you have now. We could have another options that's very different from that or something that is really trying to follow this one particular criterion. So, yeah, we'll, we'll try to give you a suite of options to consider.
I, I can see that we already have districts. When you have no districts plotted out, makes it a little bit more difficult to start fresh. But we're already ahead of the game, I would say. I, I think your company, who's been hired to facilitate these districts, and you have no input on the, on the fact that they're doing, they're, they're done on a 10-year lifespan for census, do you have any explanation of why they didn't include any kind of planning within the city, you know, building and planning as far as, we're counting heads, but we're not counting actual growth. 10 years is a long time, you know, for us to create a span. I mean, we could be on the cusp of having so many homes built, and the heads aren't here, but they're approved through our planning department, you know? And it seems like, you know, we could be a little bit skewed, so to speak. It's just a question, you know, of how we, but it's 10 years, that's a long time.
Yeah, so 10 years is what the law mandates after each decennial census. And so the hope is that it will, the, the reason you do it after every 10 years is because populations grow and, and are diminishing, and so you want to reflect that. However, if you are aware, and I referenced this in the, the third column of the redistricting rules and goals, if you're aware of a future housing development or something that is going to cause a major increase in the city population, we can preemptively try to account for that while not straying too far from the legal requirement of being within that 10% total deviation of the 2020 population.
And I guess my question is, the last presentation that you gave, and I understand it's a presentation, we could stay within 5% or 10%. 10% is actually the ideal. But if you had a, enough information to know that, as I spoke of, that there's going to be growth in a certain district, how would you justify that? Okay? When growth isn't a component of, of drawing a map? Because it would be based on heads, based on census data. And I'm just wondering, how do you, how do you do this? You know, how do you justify a 5% discrepancy?
Yeah, so the, the key thing to keep in mind here is that if you look at those redistricting rules and goals, it's 1, 2, 3 for a reason. And 1 is what we have to follow most importantly. And that, number one of that is equal population because the courts have said that, that is the most important thing when it comes to drawing districts, is making sure that you have roughly equal amounts of people in each district based on the census because that's the, that's what the courts have decreed is the most accurate and appropriate source of data to use. But if you make sure you're, you're not straying too far from that 2020 equal population, number one criterion, then if you go over to number three, you can try to account for future population growth. And so you could, you could create a district if you know there's going to be a housing development there that's like 5, 6, maybe 7% underpopulated. But you're still within that 10% total deviation that the courts have said is, is presumptively constitutional.
I got you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. I mean, I get it, you have your format. It doesn't really make sense to a point because 10 years is a long time. And I'm not complaining or just making a statement that every district, since we're already formed, it should be a little bit easier unless you want to change the whole format of the districts, you know? Which you said is an option also. We have four districts here in Lompoc at the time, but thank you for your answers.
You're welcome.
Any more questions for Councilmember Ball?
Yeah, I just wanted to, and we talked about this last time, I just wanted to remind those that are watching that, you know, at least where the numbers are right now, and again, the district thing is, is, it doesn't always make sense for everyone in Lompoc, and I understand that. But for example, you know, there's supposedly roughly an estimate of 9,500 people in District 4, and there's 10,600 people in District 3. So immediately, if anything gets built in District 3, we're immediately going outside the 10%, you know, deviation. So again, just, I think it's within, maybe in our next discussion, speaking with planning and kind of giving a rough estimate of houses that are going to be built that are in the pipeline or hope to be. And then drawing the line where we can't consider that, you know, if it's going to happen in six or seven years, it's probably not relevant to the conversation. But kind of finding out what that, what that line is, that's something I'd definitely be curious on. And then the other thing I just want to say is, I really enjoyed the Story Map website. I'm a visual person, so having that data, just breaking it down and, and kind of wrapping your head around our community and understanding where areas of denser population is and how that affects the bigger picture, and just understanding how it all comes together. So if you do have time, I definitely, definitely encourage everyone to go and check that out. It's, it's not political, you don't even have to have an opinion, but you could learn something about your community and the way that it's put together. So if you had something to do with putting all that data in there, it's a great job, and it was very informative. So, thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions for the consultant, we'll open for public comment. One of the things to remember as part of this is if you have any feedback on neighborhoods in the city, or the boundaries, or notable areas in the city and their boundaries, or any questions about the mapping tool, please pose them or comment during the public comment period so that we as council can consider them and get some clarity as we move into our discussion after public comment. You may call in at 805-875-8201, or you may come to the podium. And you have three minutes to give your feedback.
Hello, my name is Nick, Nick Lenko. I'm a resident in District Number 4. I see that the population for District Number 4 is quite significant lower than District Number 3, which is neighboring District. What I think we need to take into consideration is the Bailey Corridor project, which would be in District Number 4, and it would boost the population in District Number 4 considerably because we're talking about a considerable amount of homes being built in District Number 4. We've already drawn out the districts. We were fresh into these districts, and I feel that it's a bit premature to think about revamping the districts and redrawing the lines and just, you know, throwing the baby out with bathwater, basically. Because we have something now that exists. Let's see how it goes. Let's see how these districts are representative, let's, are represented. Let's see how these communities are represented. And if something needs to be changed, let's change it down the road. When we have more data on population in the districts and what areas, what groups need more attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did we receive any written communications on this item? Thank you. Seeing no one call, we will close oral communication or public comment on this item and bring it back to council for discussion. Is there any input we would like to give the consultants regarding neighborhoods, specific communities, that we need to make sure that are intact? Let's, let's have that discussion first, if there's any neighborhoods in the city that we need to preserve and what those boundaries might be. Councilmember Ball.
I think we honestly should wait until we have official data, from my opinion. We're just, we're just talking and we're making up some things when we actually have the facts and the information. And it sounds like we'll be able to have that information before the next two meetings, which are in January or in February of next year. To me, that just makes the most sense, but that's my opinion.
Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to make sure, just as a comment, that when we, since we're a little bit more experienced now with districts, let's make sure we don't cut something in half or stop a little short, okay? There's, there's things in districts, you know, that where you're like a block short of the end of the street, you know, and it's, some of it's confusing, you know? So if we could, with a little bit more clarity when we draw these lines and not split school districts, you know, I, I think that we can be, do it a little bit better this time, you know, a little bit more cognizant of. I'm not sure that we drew a line in the middle of a school, but, but it could happen. So I just wanted to make that point.
Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, considering, you know, some of the gerrymandered districts that I've seen all across the country, I think our districts are relatively pretty boxy and, but to your point, I find it interesting if anyone looks at District 4, the line is pretty straight, and then it does a little detour around City Hall, so I don't even get City Hall in my, at least all of it in my district, so. But yes, I agree with you on that, for sure.
Okay. Are there any notable areas in the city and what are their boundaries that we should provide any feedback? And I just keep repeating this because we're going to need to get this to the consultants ahead of those meetings, because those meetings will look at maps already drawn. And we can make adjustments then, but as much information as we can get to the consultants ahead of time, we might get better maps. And that's why I think continuing to repeat what they're looking for, even if we don't give it tonight, is really important for the public to start thinking about. So any notable areas? Councilmember Vega.
You know, as a representative of District 2, I hate it noted, well, I don't really appreciate, I understand the percentages, you know, are the higher amount of Hispanic. And I know that, that that's how we do things, you know? We do it by population, by however you want to call it there. I think we should mix it up just a little bit more, just to, to make sure we include more. There's just not a line there where just the Hispanic population ends. Yes, there's a higher demographic, but when we can use the percentages to expand it a little bit more so that we're actually doing it with a method, methodology that is aimed at reducing crime and helping others, let's just keep that mentality in, in mind, okay? I hate to be boxed up and saying, hey, District 2 is, it's 50%, 57% Hispanic, and that may be a true statement, but I want to be a little bit more colorblind when we do this so that we can be more with crime statistics instead of more with your heritage. Thank you.
So for clarification, Mr. Malave, if I recall, we were sued to force us into districts, and part of that suit required us to preserve a predominantly Hispanic district. But now, our federal law says no racial gerrymandering. So how, how do we satisfy both of those when we're considering this?
I think the way that we resolved the threat of litigation was just by going to districts. When you, when you, when you go to districts, that particular plaintiff, that satisfied him in resolving the threat of litigation. There, I'm going to maybe ask the consultant to address this, as to what the Federal Voting Rights Act regulations are or guidelines for considering race when drawing districts. But I do think that that is a consideration that you can take into account, and you certainly can, you do, you do have to consider race so as to not discriminate against any race when you're drawing your districts. But I'll let him elaborate on that if he would like.
Yes, I will only say that the, the Voting Rights Act is really designed to make sure that historically marginalized communities, what, what it calls protected classes, such in, in your community, there was, would be Latinos, Latinx, Hispanics, however you want to call them, they, you do not want to dilute their voting strength, their power. And so when you're drawing district lines, the, the way that you can dilute their voting strength is to split up a, their concentrations, their, their geographic concentrations between different districts. And so if you want to try to avoid that, however, on the flip side, the Supreme Court has said, don't make race or ethnicity the paramount or only factor. Look at other things. Look at demographics like percent renters, percent Spanish speakers, percent income, lower income or lower education levels. And you can define communities of interest that way and thereby satisfy both the Federal Voting Rights Act while also observing communities of interest and not racial gerrymandering.
Thank you for that clarity. I think that's, that's really helpful. The other thing that I personally think we do need to take into consideration, having originally been District 1, having District 1 established while I was still a council member, there is a large housing going in at that end of District 1 that is potential to be built out. So that would bump up District 1's numbers even more, so we should take that in consideration. Then you have, as Councilmember Ball has, the Bailey Corridor is potential annexation with housing predictions there. And then there's also potential housing in District 3 that might move it around. So I think getting those numbers and knowing what they are and where they are in planning, and how quickly they might come to fruition in the next three or four years, because it's a 10-year window, would be helpful for looking at that third column. Because we may have to go to that third column and just verify there because we may not have enough change in any of the other neighborhoods. But the potential growth is absolutely something to worry about District 1 getting even larger and, and not compensating into District 2 or District 4, suddenly the annexation going through and what's that predicted housing and, and it making, you know, District 4 or too large because part of the annexation for Bailey Corridor is District 2 and part of the annexation is District 4. So each district has some housing that is either on the cusp or planned for in So each district has some housing that is either on the cusp or planned for in the next ten years, and I want to make sure that you, as the consultant, have the information from our staff as to what those districts land in and what that predicted amount is and how quickly, so that it can be factored in. So I think that's really important. Councilmember Vega.
Thank you for those comments, as far as asking about the voting rights laws and things. When districts came up and we had a lawsuit filed against us because they thought it wasn't fair to the demographics of, such as Hispanic, so we cut it up and we cut Lompoc up into four pieces, because they said, hey, people are intimidated, people don't want to be involved in the process, whether it's commissions or not, because being on the larger plane, it's scary and it's not affordable for people that have to work or people with a lower income level, which turned out to be, and, you know, I can understand with the income part and the level, but I think the districts has actually done a disservice to Lompoc. So I want to note this for people that understand about getting involved, can get involved anyway. I think Lompoc had a, a population that, a little too small for cutting it up, you know? We could probably may have more impact. I'm just giving you my opinion so that people can hear that, you know, we don't all jump on board just because someone filed a lawsuit, and that's the only reason we made this choice, because the attorney did recommend that, hey, we're going to be sued for this and they're probably going to prevail, because they were going up and down California. But in essence, we would all be doing a better job if there were no districts, in my opinion, but I know that's not why we're here, but I wanted to make that point. Lompoc's a little bit too small at forty thousand to be cutting it up. I think as a whole, I think all of us should be at large, but thank you.
My final thoughts on this are, if we're expected to see final numbers late fall, early winter, before that January, it would be nice just to have a short presentation with the updates so that the public is aware. So I don't know if you could work with staff on that, because I think reminding everyone that the deadline happens in January to, to provide some initial maps and give feedback, we'll probably need a reminder somewhere in there after the numbers are released and we get a firm idea of where we are and what we need to focus on. So that would be helpful. That, that would be my best input on that one. Any other feedback for our consultants or staff? All right. Is there any other clarity we need on this item? Ms. Clerk. Okay. All right. So we will conclude our public hearing on this item, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We will go back to Item Eight. Item Eight is Appointments: Designation of Voting Delegate and Alternate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. I will start by saying I have registered and plan to attend, so I'd be happy to be voting delegate, and I believe our city manager is attending.
Yes, that is correct.
All right. Do I have any other?
I'll second.
Do I have any other council members planning to attend? All right. So it looks like I need a motion that the mayor is the voting delegate and the city manager is the alternate voting delegate.
I make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Does the second exist? I just needed the motion. And there's a third, so I think this vote will pass.
Nice trip.
Any other questions asked? Well, I think it's important that we have presence at the League of California Cities. The League really advocates on our behalf. There's several things that just went through the most recent budget that passed because we had voice in the room, and those of us that reach out to and interact with the League and then use that to interact with our Assembly and Senate representation add an extra layer to it. So being present and providing and participating at League of California Cities is really important. If we're an absentee city, we don't have a strong of advocacy, so I think it's really important that we participate. So I, I take it as an honor to go and represent Lompoc and, and vote on our behalf on some of these big issues that the League then endorses and goes to the State Assembly and Senate with. In this past year, it's been a lot of funding that we desperately need to address, things like broadband and utility or reedage, so those are all good things coming out of it. Any other questions before we vote? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five zero. All right. Did we have any written communications other than what you have mentioned tonight?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. Here is your final opportunity for oral communications this evening. You may call in at 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. You have two minutes maximum. If you're in the room and would like to speak on an item, please come forward, and you have two minutes.
Hello, Nick, Nick Lenko, resident of Lompoc, Fourth District. So I've talked about how, you know, crime is out of control here and how, you know, nothing's being done. So this past, like, last week, I had an experience where two police officers who are native Lompokians, they were real servants of the community, they, they de-escalated a situation which could have been, you know, it could have been hostile, and these two officers have a real, I guess, love for this community and they understand it. And I think maybe we need to reach out to more people in this community to take positions at our police department, because who knows the needs of our community policing better than the people who live here, better than the people who grew up here and understand this community? I'm glad to see this task force made, and I'm glad to see that it will target gangs. So I hope to see good results from this task force. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing as no one has called in and we have no additional in-room comments, we will close oral communication and move it to council comments and meeting reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Vega.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cordova.
I do have two council requests that I wanted to bring forward. One, and I don't know, maybe this is just an update, but I know that we talked about illegal camping and, and bringing forth an ordinance once the parking, the safe parking program passes. I don't know if there's anything else that, that we could look at or what the, I guess the timeline is before the safe parking program gets underway and can allow us, I guess, some leeway towards creating the, the appropriate ordinances for us to be able to do this. Can staff or maybe the city attorney weigh in on that?
No, I'll jump in first, but no, we, we are working on that one, so I mean, if you want to make a request, you can, but it is coming forth. I just need to verify with our community development director on when the safe parking is fully up and running, but I'll be working also with our city attorney on the actual ordinance for that. It's going to be, there's going to be some multiple steps to take. It's not just a simple ordinance change, but we are working on it because it is a fairly large process, but we definitely are moving forward. I know the public, we get calls, and I know you guys all get emails and whatnot about the urban campers and the motorhomes, and we are working on that, so it is definitely coming forward.
And then also, I know that this was something that I also touched on when we were discussing the zoning, but street menders, is, is, is that something that we can, I guess, bring back as a report from staff to give us the opportunity to look at what the requirements would be for anybody that's out there, I guess, and popping up carts or, you know, stuff that they're selling on the corner? My concern is that there is no permits, there may be, so I'm not going to assume that they're not, but my concern would be that they would be operating with no permits, and also that my concern would be that they're from out of town, that they're not actually locals, that they're coming in from out of town. And so I, I don't know if there's a report or some kind of information that we could look at and then consider what our regulation or what our code or talk about creating an ordinance that would prevent that from happening and taking place, or continuing to take place.
I can speak to that. I would just recommend we wait until we get our neighborhood preservation officer position filled and that person is able to come in and talk to council, provide a presentation on kind of those high-level items and where we want to prioritize efforts, because there is a mechanism, there is a permit in order to be a legalized vendor, but without that human being to go out there and enforce it and go out and say, and educate the community on what the process is, I don't know that we would even have an answer for you on how to address it at this point until I get that person in their desk or out on the street doing the job. So that recruitment is expected to open up here real soon, so.
I'll go ahead and, and I guess hold on those two, because I know that they are things that we have talked about and they are active, and I just will not erase it from my list of things to come back and follow up on, because I think that they're both items that are getting extremely out of control in our community, and they are things that we need to address and consider for the, in the best interest of everyone in the community, or at least the large majority. I'm one hundred percent positive.
Thank you. Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, I don't have too much to report. I just wanted to, I was ready and willing to give two seconds to that request, and I'm just, I want to emphasize, I'm hopeful that these topics are items that we talk about in the near future. It is very challenging. We have all gotten several emails and complaints and, you know, look, I, I live in the middle of town and I'm aware of, of the issue firsthand, but it's important for us as a city that as we are here to give you information, that we don't mislead you, and we have to have a plan in place that's actually actionable and sustainable and enforceable. So it would be easy to email several people back and say, yes, I'll forge your complaint on, and we'll see if we can get it fixed in a week. It's probably not reality. That said, it's city staff working their butts off to try to figure out how we can address this and how we can actually address it and sustain it versus just wasting a lot of staff effort and seeing no change. So it is, it is important to every one of us up here. This is a very important issue, so I just want the community to know that we are taking it seriously, but we want it to, to work. For example, someone mentioned a couple RVs that were on their street. If you take those two RVs and then you times it by the hundred-plus miles of streets that we have in Lompoc, you'll find that we have hundreds of people living in their vehicles. It's not going to be an easy fix, but we're all focused on it, and we're going to do our best to try to figure it out, so that's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Starbuck.
I actually have a very easy council request. I'd kind of like to request that the council that we would go ahead and review our tree plan. It's been in effect for many, many years. We've been doing a lot of tree work, we've been getting people call about it. It might be time to do a little review, get a presentation on it.
Councilmember Ball.
I wholeheartedly give that a second.
Councilmember Cordova.
Tres.
All righty. So you have your three. Any clarity needed by staff? Okay, thank you. I want to tell the public that, I know we sound like a broken record asking for your patience on so many issues, but I want you to remember, it took nearly ten years to dig a hole that created a lot of these issues. So we've started instituting positions and filling them and addressing them, and so it's taking us a, a window to get up and running, get the personnel in place to start dealing with some of these big issues that we're all experiencing. Please continue to let us know your concerns. Don't feel like this is an excuse, we still want to hear from you, but don't be surprised if we again ask for your patience while we either try and fill the neighborhood preservation officer or stand up the homeless liaison in the police department, or get our traffic patrol back up and running so that we can identify vehicles that are, you know, not where they should be, and that takes, you know, proactivity, and we haven't been able to be proactive for quite a while. But we are committed to that, you've heard all of council be committed to it, and we're working, you hear staff committed to that. So I just want to thank the public for keeping us apprised of issues, because not all of us can be everywhere at once, and you are our eyes and ears, so don't hesitate to let us know, but have a little patience as we try and come together with identifying the resources, the personnel, and the plan, and having and doing it appropriately and avoiding lawsuits. A lot of this is, you know, tricky, and we have to have multiple things in place, and we are working on it. So don't hesitate to reach out, but realize it's, it's hard to solve some of these problems overnight. I attended the county's elected leaders forum to address homeless, they're having quarterly meetings to keep us up-to-date, and monthly meetings with some of the subcommittees moving forward as a countywide platform so that we don't create burdens on our neighboring communities and they reduce the impact that they've created on ours. And then I attended, as your representative, the Santa Barbara County Area Government's monthly meeting. Two announcements, Community Partners in Caring. One, the volunteer of the Your, Your Award for our state district from Assemblyman Jordan Cunningham, so we thank that. They have a huge demand in our community. We have nearly forty-eight percent of our community is seniors. Community Partners in Caring provides assistance with grocery shopping, assistance with getting lawns mowed, taking you to doctor's appointments. They're a huge benefactor to those in our community that have need, but they need volunteers. So if you are flexible and have some time on a Wednesday or you have some time on a Saturday, go to their website, sign up, you get to tell them what your hours are available and work with them, and the more volunteers they have, the more funding they get and the more they can serve. If they don't have enough volunteers, that's why you may get the response of, I wish we could help you, but we're spread so thin, we can't assist you. And I don't want any of our seniors to not get the kind of assistance they need because of, you know, our commitment to care for an entire community, and without our senior commission, we don't often hear of these issues anymore. So we need, as council, to stay aware of that and support those organizations, and I just ask you to volunteer, and if you can't volunteer but you can donate, funding helps too. The second announcement is, much like we're going through the redistricting ourselves, the state and county is also going through redistricting, so please visit the California State website on redistricting, because they are going to hold sessions in our community to hear about the regional change that might need to happen for either Senator Limone or Assemblyman Cunningham's district and how that might change, and it's your opportunity to give that feedback. And the county is also going through redistricting, and they're holding their hearings. So we're all going through it, it's every opportunity for you to share your concerns about how you're represented as a population, so take advantage of it. Much of it's online and/or via Zoom, and some are in person, so take a look at both the county and the state websites for redistricting as well and participate there. We will adjourn our Lompoc City Council meeting to the next regular meeting at 6:30 PM on August 3rd, 2021.